Now called to order, roll call Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis, present. Trustee Franklin, present. Trustee Bolton.
Trustee Bolton will be absent today.
Trustee McFadden, present. Trustee Jenkins, present. Mary Lynn.
Present. Stand for our pledge of allegiance please. The approval of the minutes. Does that have a motion to make it table with the minutes? Do you have all the minutes? There's a motion of the court to table the minutes moved by Trustee Lewis. There are second. Second by Trustee McFadden. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Thank you, Senator.
Trustee McFadden, present.
This is the vote to table with the minutes.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins, to table the minutes.
Trustee Brooks. Both, uh, both sides.
There's trustee to table.
Yeah.
All right, both side. Then before the comment, someone bring up the list please, is there a list? Mrs. Lawson.
Good evening Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
I want to continue where I left off last week with the corruption going on. I want to speak a little bit more about it because I want to make sure that we all understand that corruption happens in various ways. And so when you take away from, and the impact of corruption on a community, look, and local government should restore hope and bring confidence to the people. I want to go back to the village manager saying that we have money. And I want to address that because at the end of the year, I was told that we're gonna have to pay payroll out of ARPA funds. If you have money, you don't have to do that. So I want to make it very clear that there is no money. And to continue to go on trips and do things where there is no money is, to me, a part of corruption. And you just keep driving it home. Mayor, when you speak of new businesses means lower property taxes for homeowners, it's all smoke and mirrors because we're not gonna feel that. You're trying to bring in a park district, we don't want a park district. We don't want a park district because we don't want the taxes to be raised.
That's true.
And, and I want to address that so that residents will know it's smoke and mirrors when they think that they're gonna get one thing and they're not. We have three parks, we don't take care of those parks now. What difference would it make having a park district when we don't take care of what we already have? And we haven't over the years.
That's right.
Over the years, we haven't taken care of those parks. And so getting a park district and putting additional taxes on the taxpayers is not gonna resolve anything. It's going to tax people out of their homes. And I want to make sure that the taxpayers can hear this and know and ask the questions that need to be asked because November 8th, we need to say no to that referendum. We don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to pass that. We don't want to pass that. And, and we want to be sure that we're clear on what, uh, you know, what we want and what we don't want.
Thank you, Mrs. Lawson.
Thank you.
Where's the clock?
Where's the clock? Cause just you saying, that doesn't, that don't click.
I'm sorry, I don't control the clock, but the time people told me it was three minutes.
Okay. We need to hear it.
Where's the clock?
Deborah Taylor.
Where's the clock, Mayor?
I don't run the clock, Ms. Morgan. I don't run the clock.
Okay, I wanted to talk about the University Park Library event we're having, but I'm gonna just slide over a little bit here cause who's keeping the top?
You can turn it this way.
Oh, okay, thank you. I just wonder who it was.
You're welcome.
Good evening everyone, my name is Deborah Taylor.
Damn, Mayor, come on now. Turn it this way, Mayor. I mean, that thing is.
Mrs. Taylor, go ahead. Mrs. Morgan, you're interrupting her time. Let her, her comments out, Madam.
Shut up.
Oh boy, good evening everybody, my name is Deborah Taylor and I'm a trustee of University Park Library. I just want to tell you about a special event that we're having this Saturday. It's actually for the ladies, sorry gentlemen, but we've heard a lot said about the young ladies from Happy City, didn't. So we want to provide the younger ladies, thirteen, we're starting at thirteen, and some of the ones that are not so young, so thirteen and over, we're inviting you out to the University Park Library on Saturday, which is October the first. We're gonna have a fun and fitness day, okay? We're gonna have all kinds of activities, we're gonna have, we're just gonna have a little hop stock, we can go back to old school just a little bit and then bring it up a little bit to new school. So it's from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And so we want to invite all of the residents that want to come out to University Park, and our young ladies are invited to come out and join us and we want to bring your face masks, there's gonna be a lot of jumping around and everything, but you don't have free water, we're gonna supply you that, we're also gonna give you a snack to end. So we're looking forward to a very fun day and exercise, getting you guys body toned up for this upcoming winter. So come on and join us. Again, it's Saturday, October the first, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, it's only one hour. Come on out and join us, thank you.
Mrs. Taylor, do you have a flyer or anything?
I don't have a flyer, but the newsletter should be coming out and also I think I'm gonna put it on Nextdoor, so, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Gina Williams.
Alrighty then, good evening everyone. I too want to echo off part of what Star was saying about the finances. We were told at the last meeting that there was MFT money, APR money, still a billion from Amazon, but yet we're hearing that the village employees don't have insurance, that the premiums have not been paid. I don't understand that. I also hear that at the back to school bash, the vendors weren't paid, the entertainers. We hear that he disappeared while the physician is looking around to get paid. That doesn't make sense. What's wrong that you all didn't get a contract to make sure these people got paid? It's embarrassing to the community, but yet we continue to just move on like nothing happened. These streets are still raggedy out here. If you go down and burn them, you're doing a cha-cha slide. Slide to the left, slide to the right. It's, it's terrible, but nothing is being done, but you got five being done. This, again, it makes no sense. And then you brag about packing out this town center, with what? This one went open. After last company, you don't see a sign, there's no hours to operation. Embroidery t-shirt shop made it stay open for about a week, it's still closed. Hemp smoke shop closed. So where are we getting revenue from? But you boasting about we busting at the seams. Then y'all talking about a race, race up out of here. Cause y'all are not getting a raise. And in 2017, you, Keith Griffin, Larry Brown, I mean Oscar Brown and Liz Williams, y'all voted for that race. Ms. Covington, Paula Wilson and Milton Payton said no to it. They said no, and you all made that contract, they reaped the benefits, y'all didn't. She repealed it and now it's back to where it should be. I don't see any of y'all talking or doing anything with the exception of Sonia and Brooks. Everybody else sits here, mom. And we might as well have some cardboard cutouts up here and just a recorder that says votes a. Cause y'all don't say nothing, it's, it's blue print. I don't know why we voting any of y'all in office. We talk about Oscar, that's one of the biggest issues out here. We don't hear nothing from Nina Fane, but you giving her 5,000 a month? That could be going to some of these peoples whose water is cut off. What are you thinking? What has she done? She hasn't shown up to these meetings, she's on the bear's corner, oh Rudy, Rudy, Rudy. But she's not here saying anything to us. She's not monitoring, we hear nothing, but yet I'm getting calls all the time from neighbors and people whose water is cut off or either subject to be cut off. And, and I'm sorry, Trustee Lewis, we don't hear a report? At least Trustee Brooks was telling us something. Have you met with EPA? Are you talking to Patrick George? Well, you don't bring a report? You're not bringing a report?
Mrs. Williams, you reached your mark.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments.
We were about to hear something from Trustee Lewis.
Mrs. Gloria Gant.
Yeah. I guess it's still mom's word, huh? She can't hear from Lewis. She can't say no joke. I mean, Mayor.
Like Gina said.
Can't say anything.
Hello, everybody. Hello, everybody. I, uh, I don't really know what's going on, I see nothing happening, so can anybody tell me what's really going on? Everything is ugly. Ugly, ugly, ugly in University Park. I don't see any beauty. I don't see anything for all folks to do like me. I don't see anything for the kids to do. I see every, the pool, it's over by my house, and I'm getting bitten by bugs in the springtime because of, and the smell, and the smell, it stinks. So can anybody tell me what's going on? I see nothing happening. And we keep repeating the same things over and over and over. And it's, it doesn't make any sense. And I'm tired of stuff that doesn't make any sense. I quit stuff that don't make sense. I'm sitting down now, I didn't need three minutes to say what I needed to say. What's going on?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gant, and I'm quite sure any trustee here would be glad to sit down and have an opportunity to meet with and find out what's going on. Excuse me, I'm speaking right now to the young lady, please don't disrupt me. So I'm quite sure there's an open door policy, there's not a trustee or mayor here that has refused to sit down and meet with any resident. So the door is open, if you want to find out some detailed information, please take the opportunity to sit down with them and see what's going on for real, in black and white, and not just conversation. I'll open that opportunity to you anytime.
Mrs. Gant, I would like to apologize again. I have been working tirelessly and asking, I've asked for years for the pool to be drained and tarred, and it's still not done. She lives exactly one door away from the bridge and the, one home away from the bridge and the pool. It is horrendous land. It is still, it has water in it, it's had water in it for years. And so we're not gonna fix this. And I mean, I'm looking at this situation and it's ridiculous. I, I have to say something in reference to Ms. Star and also Mrs. Gina. You know, they have valid concerns of what's going on in this community. They're not making these things up, they see with their eyes, they taste with their tongue and deal with their hands. They're tired of paying their tax dollars and not receiving anything that is, is not a lot to ask. It's not a lot. Drain the pool. I, I suggested flood brothers can come out and drain the pool in about a couple of hours. Why hasn't it been done is the question. And if someone's child gets, gets over there in that pool, what can we as administration say? What we gonna say to the parent? We're sorry, oh well, we wish we would've did it, wish, no, we have to do something about this. It's ridiculous and it's worn on too long, too, too, too long. And I'm just, and I have to apologize again to Ms. Gant because she lives extremely close to the pool and the smell is horrendous. And she walks every morning and she has to see that smell and deal with it. And so as a trustee living close to her, I, I am asking Mr. Matt Stacy to get it done no later than tomorrow or by Friday. If we can spend money doing things that are frivolous, we can take care of the business of this village.
Just, just for the record now, that Mr. Stacy speak for himself. I'm not mistaking, the pool's been drained about a month and covered.
It's drained, but it's not covered.
It's not covered, okay.
It's been drained. Three inches of water, cause we couldn't get it all the way down to the bottom, well they have been pumping down and draining.
Thank you, it's not going on there for you, thank you. It's been, it's been going. Okay, thank you trustee, you just didn't know. I mean, we had drained and what was going on. Yeah, it's a plumbing problem like that that comes out this way. But it just didn't start flooding when Matthew came.
You were the past administration too, hello? Hello?
Okay, that, that ends our public comment section. Item F1, Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda, is there a motion?
Um, when looking at the consent agenda, um, I would like to pull F1C from the consent agenda. I've just received the bills payable, I have a lot of questions in reference to this account. I have not received any of the information that I asked for last, uh, last Tuesday in this last meeting. So F1, F1C needs to be pulled from the consent agenda until I receive all of the documentation in reference to this. And I was going to say that it.
To rename the account trustee? This is item F1C?
No, I'm not gonna rename.
Is that what you're talking about, item F1C?
I want, I want pulled, I want to pull the table.
All right, you got, there's a motion, make it pull, to pull that item, is there a second trustee Brooks?
I'll, I'll second.
Second. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Actually, uh, point of reference Mayor, what, what if we, we would just pull it, but we wouldn't have to vote on it, right? She would just pull it and then you would bring it up as a discussion, like what is the?
We're just, if there's enough, if, if there's enough votes, if there's enough votes to pull it, then we'll pull it. If there's not enough votes, we'll proceed on as we still gonna do at the, at the last time.
General, it's pulled from the consent agenda, it's voted on individually. Right, right, but like when we vote on consent, then afterwards we vote. I mean, like she pulls it, but right now, so what the mayor would call the vote on would be F2A, B, uh, D and E. It, it wouldn't be C.
So you're, so however, you want to consider this separately, not to pull it from the agenda?
Right, you, you didn't just, you're right, you put it as a consent.
Right, yeah, she wants to consider this as separate, we'll proceed on with the other consent agenda. And we'll come back before we go to the next agenda and discuss this one.
Then, then, then her items discussed.
Okay, just for the record, any trustee has the ability to pull something, but this is something that we discussed earlier at the committee regarding this, uh, this, the renaming of the account. So trustee, we'll pull that item, we'll proceed with the other items, which will be item F1A, 1B, D and E, and then as the consent agenda. Then we'll come back and revisit the item F1C and we'll move forward from there.
Right, that was problematic, parliamentary question there, that was not.
Yeah, we got you, we got you.
That was problematic.
All right. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as a amendment with item F1C removed with, to move, and then we'll proceed on with item F1A, B, D and E?
So both.
Is it moved by trustee Brooks? Second by Lewis, roll call Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis, both side. Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden. Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Uh, both side. Okay, so now what we go do to the discussion, item F1C, a resolution approving and authorizing to rename the special events fund to community development projects funds. Floor is open trustee Jenkins, please express your concern.
My concern is if we rename the count, would the count be, now first of all, there, there is a most account, am I correct? Is there a most?
No, the Mad, no, there is not, manager isn't here, unfortunately, we've stated that over and over again, I'll let that.
Well, okay, well, we won't say most, we'll say most slash special events account. Well, no, we don't want to get into what it is, whether it is a busy. Okay, well, what I want to say is that I've received bills payable. When I received bills payable, I was very astounded at 25,000. Wait one second, let me get the, the exact amount, uh, for this. It was 25,689.74 dollars and bills payable were for checks for the back to school, um, the back to school event. My question is, did this money come out of this account? And the village manager is not here, so she cannot answer these questions. So I think that it is fair to pull this, table it until next time, so we can find out what happened with all of these checks. Because with these checks, I have questions that will come during our time with the bills payable, because this is unreal to me. And, and I need more clarification in reference to what is going on with this, with this particular 25,000 dollar price tag. I haven't received any invoices, I want to see contracts. I also want to see all council checks and where they were deposited, the in and out of the bank account, which I have not received from the village manager when I asked for it last week. So I want to pull this, I don't want to rename, I want everything, I want the transparency of what is going on with this account before we rename it and call it anything else. And I want it on the record, Mrs. Kelly, please, I appreciate that.
I'm his second emotion to table.
There's a, there's a first and a second to table. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Both side.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Both side.
Votes no. All right. We gotta do the business. Item New Business, item F2A, a resolution of the Village of University Park, Williston Hook County, Illinois, authorizing and approving the execution of business, business signature cards and related bank documents with Midland State Bank and US Banc Corp. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Lewis. Second by trustee McFadden.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, uh, nothing, nothing changed? You need me to sign something, am I still available?
Yeah, yeah, you still on the books, man, you still on the books.
Okay, I'm here if you need me.
Yes, sir. I believe, I believe that.
No, I'm serious. Yeah, I mean, you know, uh, but yeah, no, I'm, uh, I was wondering, what was taking so long? Uh, because the checks need to go out, right, all right.
All right, thank you. Roll call Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis, both side. Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Votes aye. Item F2B, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an amendment to the economic incentive agreement, binding between the Village of University Park and Terrico, both am real estate partners, University Park, is there a motion? Moved by trustee Lewis. Second by trustee Franklin.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, careful group, are you here today?
Yes, sir.
Where they at?
Dan.
Hold on, let me find what I'm looking. Okay. Please pardon me, I, we doing everything by, uh, no, I printed this. Okay, let me first say, uh, I got this email just today. And it's section A, and maybe the attorney can help clarify on this one, where it says the village and the developer entered a certain economic development agreement effective July 19, 2020, where the developer agreed to develop the property with the intended use and consideration for the village paying the developer sale tax incentives of $5 million for the development of A and B and the property, real estate taxes, tax incentives of $8 million for the development of area C. So this was not, and I can't get, I can't find the original agreement, and then I guess as we go further down, I'm just curious, Terrico group, we have it here, and let me just go briefly where it goes, uh, I guess in so many words, the operation of hotel and other certain commercials in use, so because of the unfavorable market, so I guess we're just gonna go ahead and put that in agreement, so, so for sure we won't have a hotel over there. So I mean, is this where we entering now? I mean, why, why is it that the possibility that something else can be redeveloped over there?
Um, I think that what we're saying here is that we are full steam ahead on the travel center, which is, which is parcel A. Parcel B, until we have demand for the commercial users, we're not gonna build it, and nobody's, nobody's come to, we've talked to several different hotels, for example, and several different QSRs, and I think until we build the travel center and get some more activity there, I don't think that there's gonna be demand for those users today. But I think that in the future, there's every expectation that we'll be able to get commercial users there.
In the future? Okay, cause see, this is what I have a problem with. Well, let me just ask one question, do you guys donate to the mayor's campaign?
From our, yes, we did as principals of, of Terrico, we did donate to the mayor's campaign.
Let me say this. The only issue I have with that is, that seems to be the same MO. MO is what a cop's term we use, or a crook. They always, I'm not calling you a crook. But everybody over there has donated to his campaign and got a yes vote. I want to see what you guys want to do, and I really wish the donation probably should have came after my vote. But because this continues, and I really, really, I was a trustee sitting up here when we developed tip seven, and I say it again, the people. when we developed TIP seven, and I say it again, the people University Park want to retail. Amazon, I let slide by. Now we got a steel company, we got Carvana that's across from the TIP company, but it's a Carvana maintenance facility. And when that shuts down, the people University Park is gonna suffer. You are our last hope, sir. You are our last hope.
Yeah, we are delivering, in terms of, we are delivering to do commercial, robust travel center there. That's what we came to you, you know, well over a year and a half ago to discuss, and that is what we are doing as part of area A, as more things become more, more developed there, we plan on doing more commercial as it relates to area B. But in terms of helping out with your tax base over the long term, that is what we are doing. In terms of, in terms of us supporting, supporting people, we got our economic incentive package passed in July, we're looking at some clarifications to what we're at, so we can be able to move forward on our project. So there was, there was nothing, I would say, in terms of what we did vis a vis supporting people within this community, and I would respectfully say that, um, that we did not do anything um, untoward or anything that would, that would be perceived as, um, being something you would determine as being criminal.
Did I say criminal? Let's, let's clarify, did I say criminal? What I said, MO, which is a term when I was a detective, that people, crooks use as their, well, I, I think of the term, probably know the term, uh, off the top of my head. They have a routine. And the thing is, is that if you want me to go through the routine, Clay Co is all in his campaign. Uh, you, sir, I'll read it off if you want, but basically everybody in TIP seven contributed to the campaign. I just would have preferred if you were gonna do it, it would have been afterwards. That's all my point is.
No, I, I, I respect that.
That's all I'm saying, I'm not saying you a crook. I know a crook. I've dealt with a crook, I've dealt with crooks for almost two decades. I'm just saying, for transparency for the village of University Park, because I watched the developer tell me on TV on Zoom, he expect a vote to pass when it came down to that steel company. He expected a vote, and what we did not know, but the newspaper found out, was forty-five days before that, he got paid. So, my thing is, whatever you're gonna do, sir, please, take into consideration, this is what I learned when I worked the streets of Harvard, nothing lasts forever. Take heed to what I just said with that, because everything changes. And I just hope that with C, and I believe you, you haven't lied to me yet, but the thing is, is that we're broke and I'm angry. I'm angry because we cannot get what we asked for over there. And bad enough, Clay Co, not Clay Co, Carvana, we didn't even see Carvana, they haven't even stepped up into this podium. Really, to be honest, sir, you the only one that stepped up to the podium, that's why I have to say, whatever you do with them three plots, please do the right thing. I yield my time.
Yeah, I ju, I just wanna make the comment, and let me just say this, no problem whatsoever. I had a gaufling, a variety of people came into the mayor's gaufling, like they do all of the mayors and support the gaufling. The reason they know these things, because I posted publicly, so it's public information, so there's nothing being hidden. It's on my D two, they look on the state of Illinois, both state board of elections, and look at the D two, and it tells you every single person, there's nothing inconsistent, there's nothing illegal, every single mayor who sat in his seat as me, before me and after me, has had gauflings and had the same people that work in their community make contributions, as simple as that.
How come the residents don't know?
Their residents know as much as they want to do, it's nothing, it's nothing, it's nothing to hide, it's nothing to disclose, it's, it's public information. If you want to find out something, look on the state board of, uh, elections website, you can look at the friends of Josephine Rudea, and it tells you fines, recipients, expenses and everything, it's completely above the board, so if you want to make something out of nothing, that's what you guys want to do, we're here to make this village go forward. So, that's it. Roll call madam clerk.
Wait, wait, tell me that. This is directed to the, to the village attorney in reference to the legal aspects of what is and I need to make sure that, you know, all of us up here, we have families and we intend to go home to our families, and we do not want to be compromised in any way whatsoever. So, is this, because I voted yes, and I'm trying to understand, is this considered a quid pro quo?
Yes.
Okay.
I, let the attorney answer, please, please let the attorney give us a, a.
You mean a campaign contribution?
Yes, it can, can you, and.
I mean, it's ve, it's very common.
We can't hear you, sir.
It's very common for contributions to be made by businesses regulated by a public body.
All of them, before we even know about it?
Could you let the man finish, please?
It, it is public record, as the mayor indicated, uh, and he's giving you the website to look at. Beyond detail, I, I don't have, I don't have any other details, uh, trustee, regarding any other issue relating to that a campaign contribution, that has to be disclosed, this is the mayor.
And I thought you was straight.
Well, what I will say, and I was going to say this.
Forget about it, merely forget about it, I thought you was straight, Marco.
What I will say is say this, I am, you know, I feel that the board should have been informed in reference to this, so we can make the type of decisions that we want to make when it comes down to this, without compromising ourselves or our government integrity. And so I am angry, because we did not know. So if this is customary practice, I think that it should have, you should have allowed us to know this is what's going on, or check out my D twos, or you say anything else.
You was invited to.
I, well, it wasn't assigned, I'm quite sure it says, look at my D twos.
You know you was?
Oh, I didn't know.
So. So, you know, and this is. This is getting to be.
Are you going that route, you gonna do a little?
Thank you.
Alright, roll call madam clerk.
It's a ball. Trustee Lewis, both side. Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Votes no.
Trustee Brooks.
Votes no.
Votes aye for economic development.
Does he want more water, Lewis? Say a, how about you Franklin, say a.
Mrs. Morgan, please stop this from the meeting, alright?
All of them say you want more water.
Item F two C, first, second and third reading and ordinance amending, uh, amending ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, an ordinance granting zoning relief for the property located at the northeast corner of Central Avenue and Stumpel Road in the village of University Park, Willing Cook Counties, is there a motion?
Motion.
Moved by trustee McFadden. Second by trustee Lewis.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, I, look, I know I'm getting over, so my memory kind of sometimes flies, getting over things. Uh, did, did we talk about this in the cow or before? Cause I mean, I, I know we got.
This is, yeah, I think this is the trip, the quick trip, if I'm not mistaken. The quick trip.
Quick trip?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's on the opposite corner of their government.
Oh.
It's across, yeah.
Okay.
It just doesn't have a title name either.
Okay, thank you, sir, I yield.
Roll call madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis, both side.
Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Mayor who did?
Votes aye. Item F two D, first, second and third reading and ordinance amending part eight, title four, chapter eight, chapter eight ninety, section eight ninety dash zero ten of the village of University Park code of ordinance sales tax, is there a motion? Moved by Lewis. Second by McFadden. I'm sorry, trustee, sorry, I'm sorry.
Question, which, which one is this one, mayor?
F two D.
The liquor sales?
Oh, move.
They gonna be here for a long night.
Liquor sales, does it say liquor sales?
No, this is, this is, this is young one, just allowing, uh, when up and going, they're able to, uh, have a, a poor license, like a gaming facility in their travel center.
Right.
That's it.
Travel center.
Yes.
We all on the trips and stuff?
I yield my time, Mr. Mayor, I found it.
You got it.
Eight oh eight, chapter eight oh eight?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I seen it.
You wanna sit?
Roll call madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis, both side.
Here's a little.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Mayor who did?
Votes aye.
Y'all said y'all was voted on the one with.
Item F two C, first, second and third readings and ordinance amending part eight, title two, chapter eight oh eight of the village of University Park code of ordinance liquor, liquor sales and industrial zone.
Trustee Brooks, wasn't that the one you just thought it was?
Right, right.
F two D.
F, F two D.
Yeah, we voted on that.
That's the sales tax.
So what is the sales tax? For F two D?
Yeah, eight oh eight is a zone, right?
Right, right. Eight, eight ninety is sale tax, eight oh eight is, 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 uh, the liquor ordinance. Increasing, yeah.
You know, I, look, I got a.
You already, you're.
Eighty's I had.
Yeah.
I wish, this whole fashion, cause you steady flipping, it, it has not been right since they switched our system. But I'm looking, um, Donna, it's, it's okay, I don't change my vote. It's only a two percent.
Yes.
Yes.
We talked, yeah.
Eight, eight ninety is at two percent, I'm fine with that.
What am I looking at? F two D, so that, so they just voted on F D.
On the two percent.
On F two D. Which was.
Yes, it's revenue.
Revenue.
That's revenue.
By, by the last.
Right, right, this, this would consider revenue, it's from one to two, for the revenue.
Revenue?
Yes, it would revenue. Ma'am?
We got revenue?
We got a lot of revenue.
We will be, vote yes on this will bring revenue.
We got a lot of revenue coming here, but you have to give it.
Yeah, all this closed business is coming out. Talking about.
Yeah. Yes. Alright, roll call madam clerk.
We read a motion on, on. She was second, she was on first over there, and she was second.
And, and, and Jenkins Bell did the second on that motion, then the question changed, so, so roll call madam clerk. F two B.
Right.
We did agree for F two B. Which is the liquor store, liquor sales in this industrial zone. Moved by Lewis, second by Jenkins Bell, question by Brooks and something else. Now the roll call.
Trustee Lewis, both side. Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Oh, both side, both side, I'm sorry.
Mayor who did?
Votes aye. Item F two F, a resolution designating the village manager, we're gonna strike that, make a motion to table that, because that's not actual, accurate information. That's item F two F, that's not right. We're gonna make a motion to.
No, it's not right.
We're gonna make a motion to table that.
It wasn't right?
We're gonna, we're gonna table.
We opened that up, it was no surprise there.
It was fine.
No, no, we wanna just table that, we're gonna take a motion to table, she wants to be here.
She wants to be here.
Sir. Roll call madam clerk. Yeah, 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 trustee. Well, you have to ask the village manager, I can't speak for her in her absence.
Well, Ms. E here, Ms. E, grab a mic, so we can make sure all debt is paid.
Did we talk about the tip?
We just confirm and see.
Trustee, you asked if I'd been paid?
Compensated since you, uh, your new position, have you been compensated as the TIP administrator?
No.
Okay, so how, uh, can you tell me how, how, how far back?
Uh, I've not been paid for August and September is about to end, so there were two months.
August, September, okay. Uh, yield my time, sir.
Alright. There's your question, roll call madam clerk.
I gotta tell you, she ain't gonna keep me paid, and we get paid.
Is this the type?
Yeah.
Just ask Ms. Coffey on that. One hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Trustee Lewis.
Both side. Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Mayor who did?
Votes aye. Item F two G, an appointment to the planning commission, that person is Oscar Brown Jr. Is, is there a motion? Moved by trustee Brooks. Second by Lewis. Roll call.
Oh, uh, Mr. Mayor, can I just, uh, make the comment, um, to, uh, I wish the best for him and his family? Okay, just acknowledge it before, uh, this vote, uh, because he voted for me to be police and fire commissioner, said things before the vote, so thank you.
Thank you trustee Brooks. Roll call madam clerk.
Trustee Lewis, both side. Trustee Franklin.
Both side.
Trustee McFadden.
Both side.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both side.
Trustee Brooks.
Both side.
Mayor who did?
Vote aye, welcome back, uh, trustee Oscar Brown. Unfortunately, Oscar Brown is not with us, he's making preparations, his father just passed, so he's making preparations for the funeral, he wants to give everybody his best regards, and he looks forward to great service in the community of University Park, so please keep Oscar and the family in our prayers. Uh, they'll have the funeral arrangements. He'll send, he'll send them to me sometime tonight and tomorrow, we make sure it's, uh, everybody knows. Okay. Alright. Item F H, a resolution honoring Sergeant Daniel Murphy on his retirement and thanking him for his many years of dedicated service to the village of University Park. One second, let me find his resolution. I think I did have it, I was gonna say a book, so I had to read it, you don't wanna do it. I was, I was gonna say a book, so I had to do this. Officer Murphy, you just wanna come up to the podium, we don't have the, the, madam clerk is here, we don't have your other credentials, which, but I'd like to read this resolution and thank you for your service here.
Still an ovation for this lady, yeah, yeah.
A little less stress.
This is, this is resolution number R twenty twenty-two, resolution honoring Sergeant Daniel Murphy on his retirement and thanking him for thirty years of dedicated service to the great village of University Park. Whereas, the village of University Park is a home root Illinois municipal corporation located in Cook and Will counties, Illinois. Whereas, on rare occasions, the mayor and board find it appropriate to express its appreciation for exceptional service to a retiring member of staff by publicly recognizing them and expressing such appreciation. And whereas, Sergeant Daniel Murphy began his career on January sixth nineteen ninety-two as a probationary patrol officer and rose with the. as a probationary patrol officer and rose through the ranks to become sergeant in June of two thousand and six, with the University Park Police Department, announced his retirement April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas, Sergeant Daniel Murphy began his journey to that of police sergeant, began in nineteen ninety-two. His accomplishments were vast and included co-founder police bicycle unit in nineteen ninety-six, field training officer nineteen ninety-seven, child safety zone two thousand and two, public information officer two thousand and three, field training supervisor two thousand and four, promoted to the ranks of sergeant two thousand and six, chief of investigations two thousand and nine, Will Gundy County Major Crimes Task Force two thousand and eleven, Internal Affairs Investigation two thousand and thirteen, acting operations commander two thousand and fourteen, acting chief of police two thousand and fourteen, and management liaison sergeant for a period in two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas, Sergeant Daniel Murphy's dedication to the health and welfare of this community and his passion to help others, thereby giving of himself not for fame and fortune, but for the humanitarian and selfless individual that he is. And whereas, neither time nor space will allow us to chronicle all of the accomplishments of Sergeant Murphy. But, we must add, that during his tenure, he received many awards and recognitions, including, but not limited to, United States Air Force Honorable Discharge November of nineteen ninety-four, Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and sixteen, Illinois Law Enforcement Polar Plunge two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen, St. Bonjour's two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen, Cook County Sheriff Award for Valor October two thousand and fourteen, Cook County Sheriff's Award of Merit Outstanding Service and Professionalism October two thousand and sixteen, South Suburban Association of Chief of Police Materials Award October in two thousand and seven. And that's just saying a few things about our retired Sergeant Daniel Murphy, thank you and congratulations, please let standing give this young man a big round of applause.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Sergeant Murphy, you can stop right there for a moment. So first, I wanna say, um, thank you so much for your service to the community as a officer that was a officer when I was a kid in the community. Um, we looked up to you. Never had a bad experience, with so much going on in the media, it's a privilege to say that you served in a respectful way, so what the community really had love and respect for you. If you don't mind, I'm gonna share something that, um, we began to work on in your last days, as a sergeant in the village of University Park, that many people don't know, cause a lot of times, things I do is, is, is with my heart and not to, but to showcase, and I appreciate, uh, what you did. So, I reached out to Sergeant, as well as Chief Wilson, and asked if they would sit on a young children's wellness council, that I'm the lead of, which is a council that works on behalf of children in the Southland, and this is a council of, um, health leaders, education leaders, law enforcement leaders, pastors, and other dignitarians in the Southland. And he immediately stepped up and said he absolutely would. And, and not even knowing that this was, that this would be your last year, you were in the mode of retirement, I think back on some of the comments that you made during our council meetings, around how you were open to help in any way that you can. Um, you always gave good feedback, and it's, uh, truly appreciated. And then we took it a step further, and we began to work on, and you'll be proud of, of, of where we're at with this, we began to work on a way that we can provide immediate resources for the beat officers as they respond to crisis situations that may involve, uh, young children, because we're on a young children council, so our mindset is how can we support the, the children's mental health in the village of University Park, and we started talking about developing an app with a QR code, that if a beat officer responds to a, a situation at a home, and there's a crisis involving a child, there's a QR code that a parent can simply scan with their phone and be immediately connected to resources within a twenty mile radius. Uh, we've, we've officially finished that, finished the app, and it's, and it's, uh, it's up and going, so, uh, that's something that we'll be rolling out soon, and I'll make sure it gets to the, uh, to the website, and to the school district. So what it ended up developing into is, uh, like, it's a QR code, so if there's a crisis, they'll be able to scan it, uh, they'll be able to kinda identify the type of crisis, the type of supports that they'll need, and within a twenty to twenty-five mile radius, they'll be able to find those immediate supports and be connected, and then we also have our family navigator, which you, you're familiar with, the young lady who will connect that family with, to help them through the process, right? If they need transportation, we have some funding around that, and those different things as well. Um, so, a, awesome job with that, and, and I appreciate you and what you did, uh, on helping that get going. And then finally, um, we have completed the Illinois', um, Children's Mental Health Plan for the next five years, and it's been adopted by the governor, and, uh, I'm also gonna make sure that, that we get a link to that on our website as well, you know, I played a big role in, in, in that work as well, so, the work continues, and I'm gonna also, um, extend an invitation for you to help support in any way that you may want to, because I, I felt the passion, uh, when you sat on the council, I know this is something that you truly love to do, so, um, the Young Children Wellness Council is still going strong, and even if you're, uh, just a part of it as a mentor, right, just to provide some wisdom, you're more than welcome, so thank you for your service, and thank you for allowing me to work with you in your last days.
And he's working hard, too, to go.
Mayor, you can't see me, I keep waving my hand, you recognize?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say something to, uh.
To Murph.
Murph. As I look around in this room, I'm the only one in here that goes back to seven years, back in here, here on the list. But it was a pleasure having worked with you, and, um, I wish you the best in the future years.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
I need to make, well, trustee.
It's, uh, very quickly.
Trust, trust, hold up, let's make the motion, I need a motion to accept the resolution. Moved by trustee McFadden. Second, that's trustee Jenkins and trustee Franklin, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis, both sides. Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee McFadden? Both sides. Trustee Jenkins? Both sides. Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Mayor Wills.
Uh, both sides, yeah, trustee.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, Mayor, uh, if we can, uh, I'm glad that we have done a resolution on, uh, Sergeant Murphy. Um, I think Murphy had five years, five more years than me, so, I think I was like twenty-five, but when you hear about a gentleman like that way in Army, so, apparently he did something right, but if we can, Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, quite a few people who have retired, the village needs to make that change and start acknowledging. I can name off actually one, uh, Commander Stroud. We need to recognize these officers, hand them a gold badge, gold watch, and be more, they have made more sacrifices than, um, than one can even understand, that's why it's the sacred brotherhood, so, take that under advisement, Mr. Mayor, or, uh.
I know where you're going.
Okay, all right.
I know where you're going.
As long as you know where I'm going, I'm all right, y'all.
Yeah, you know.
I yield my time.
All right, I agree, yeah.
Okay.
I just wonder why the other ones didn't do it, but I don't have any problem with it.
No, and I agree, that's why I say, I think it's time for us to start.
I have no problem recognizing those providing the service and years of their time for us.
Right, thirty years is a long time, you know, firefighters as well, firefighters and police officers. Public works still, if we can, keeping that long.
Yep, attached to your crew, here we go, is a listing of general operating expenses for the great village of University Park that occurred June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, through September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. General fund one million, oh ninety-seven, five sixty-seven, and forty-four, road and grid seventy-five thousand, six hundred and forty-eight, town center thirty-five thousand, three forty-four, ten, capital project twenty-six, four ninety-four, five, to four thousand, to five, two thousand, three ninety-four, twenty-five, to six, I mean, to five, three, four, five, five, two, six, one thousand dollars, payroll one fourteen thousand, seven eleven, with a grand total one million, six, six fifty-four, one hundred and twelve fifteen cents. Is there a motion?
Payroll, what?
Don't, don't everybody jump at one time, is there a motion? Motion, moved by trustee Franklin. Second by trustee Lewis.
Yep.
Go ahead, trustee Brooks.
Yeah, so, Mayor, I just wanna, I wanna go over just, uh, I just had an email, the village manager is not here. This email came, I wanna say, after Miss E, with a golf course, you know, I gotta bring him up, too, the golf course had a, in my understanding, there was some repossession of, of. Equipment? So I guess the question I come in is that, what I was confused about part of that, and I was trying to look through it, do bills pay up, I wanna get this understanding, that we were on our summer schedule, did we continue to cut the checks, and if so, why did they even have to send that, why they just could not pay the money out of the management fee? I know, that's why I say, tonight is a good one to let people off the hook, cause she's not here, I wanna put somebody on the hook. Yeah, he wouldn't know. Miss Scott would know. So do that mean we table the bills until she get here?
Well, you, you can, you can pull certain items if you like, but I think the business of the village needs to move forward, and people, bills need to be paid, we've, you know, when we first got in this seat, our credit and our bond rate was a negative fifty, we finally got that to a positive aspect by paying our bills and moving forward, our Moody's and standards was at the worst in the history of this community, now we're in really good places where we can get a B plus for Moody's and standards, so paying the bills has a great part of it, and I'm sure everybody has discrepancies, there's great opportunity before we get to the public forum, for everybody to discuss these things and we can come out, but if that's what you wanna do, I mean, I don't have any problem with it, because it's election season, and people gonna make it seem like everything is bad, and this is this, that, and another, but we're gonna stay focused, President, and we're gonna continue to move this forward, this village, so.
Okay, well, I didn't yield my time, so.
Just conversing with you.
Yeah, yeah, so, well, let me say this then, uh, uh, let me also say that, if the, paying the bills didn't start in nineteen, paying the bills started when I came, in seventeen, let's get that together, eighteen, the eighteen audit report reflects. No, you wasn't here, I know you wasn't here, when you came, though, you knew what was here, and it was, it was what we were supposed to do, but nonetheless, the thing is, is that we cannot continue to make knee jerk reactions, or we, we passed knee jerk reactions, but my point is, and another point, since you made it, is that the reason why you say things at these forums is because this is a managerial government ran by the people, and the people of University Park have to know what's going on with their tax dollars. The golf course is simply controversial, period, because we were paying money, they were never open, now they open, maybe they're competing, I don't know, but my point is, is that we are paying, when we were paying these bills, my point is, is what was the purpose of that, is it something I'm missing, and the bills were already getting paid, Mayor, well, let me ask this, were the bills already paid, the, the times we didn't meet for almost a month and a half?
Right.
So I guess, Miss Scott not here, so nobody can cricket, 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 so, look.
Miss Scott wasn't in here two weeks.
I, I yield my time, Mr. Mayor, but I'm, if, we need to find out, why is it, why is it that?
I hear you, I hear you.
The collection, if they can't pay it out of, we, the money we given, are they asking for more, cause I didn't see it here, in that, in the repossession?
What was the repossession?
Some machinery.
I think she said in the email, on the verge.
On the verge?
Of repossession, go back to it, I think that's what it was.
Right, but if they get the money, why, why come back to the board? Take care of it, it, I mean, we gave them what, like, a one of them, like, right here?
One sixty-nine?
Uh, nine, and a eight, and, and, and seven, September, excuse me, September, August, and July, they, they, they got the two management fees, the restaurant, and, I think this is, no, I think this is a mistake, restaurant, it says golf, golf restaurant management, okay, I see that's a double, cause, yeah, I see one for twenty-two thousand, five hundred, another one for forty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-six, which is the usual, but whatever they was, whatever they was collecting, we need to find out, what is it that, that this reposessor is coming to the property to get, that's what we need to follow, that's the basis of this.
There's something, there's something on the verge of it, but that, but it actually has not happened, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what she, she sent the following email.
Okay.
Right, if, my point is, my point is that, it's not about election season and the world is going upside down, because that's, that's not how I wrote. I may tell the truth, but there's no need to be playing that game, I'm just saying, it's the taxpayers' dollars.
Amen.
You know, so, I yield my time, Mr. Mayor.
You're not, you're not motioning to pull it off?
No, no, not voting for it, so I ain't, ain't gonna bother you.
Trustee, something?
It is exactly, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Sixteen checks that need to be pulled off the bills payable in reference to the, uh, back to school events, also the one for Nina Fane, um.
Thank you.
Nina Fane as well, for eleven thousand dollars.
Wow. Whoa, whoa, we don't have nothing from them.
Cause she hasn't got to pay you this, this company.
And she don't need to get that. They ain't coming from this lady now. What is she doing?
Nothing. And then the reason why I'm pulling the checks is basically, we don't know what they do.
You're asking them what to be pulled?
All of them, because they're just names with no.
You have to go through the process, make a motion, the second, the table, and all that stuff, cause, uh.
I wanna make a motion to pull all the checks involving the back to schools event, as well as Nina Fane and the CHW management group, until they give us a report on their expenditures.
With trustee, my recommendation to you, if you see these items that you wanna pull, give them, give us the line item, the number, the number that's associated with it, group them all together, ask a motion to have those removed and not voted on, and the board will make a decision.
One. One zero nine. One nine seven. CHW group. One oh nine. One nine eight. One nine eight. CHW group. I want one oh six, four one nine. Marquee event and stage. One zero nine, zero two seven, Robert Hutchinson the third. One zero nine, zero three six, Matt Kelly. Zero nine, zero three eight, Lily Reynolds. One zero nine, zero four four, My Naked Soul. One zero nine, zero seven one, Steel Production. One zero nine, zero seven eight, Trophies and Awards. One zero nine, zero eight two, Versus Mobile Arcade. One zero eight, nine, three nine, ABC Float. One zero eight, nine, five zero, Samantha Chat- Chapman?
Chapman.
Chapman. One zero eight, nine, five six. It just says services. One zero eight, nine, eight zero, Jolene Watson. One zero eight, nine, seven nine, nameplates.
Whole bunch of made-up stuff.
Would Gavin pay the bill wisely and correctly?
Right. I don't care if it takes on this as a taxpayer's money. What's the total amount?
We a boundless field.
You're right, we're doing it right. Absolutely. I, I. A hundred percent.
This is not how we do business.
There's, there's, there's.
One. One zero six, four zero six, Nina Fane, eleven thousand, seven nine.
Hallelujah.
Jeez. No, what does she make us make?
One zero eight, eight five two.
That's what she doing.
That's CHW management.
You wrong, Joe.
How many times y'all don't pay C?
We a bound today.
One zero eight, eight five three.
It's not just. It's five of them.
What's the total amount on these, uh, this, uh, back-to-schools, uh, fact?
They could be at the same way.
Wendy must not be in the hearsay community. I sit down and tell Wendy that people will be the facts and see what's real, because there's been a bad reception.
They would've sat there and let all that damn people just do. Then pressure enough.
You could've told us when you go take them on a trip, uh.
Right, right. They say that they sit there and say.
Don't coach your guys to press up.
What?
When you have your private fees and stuff, that's when you coach.
Right.
I want one zero nine, one zero nine.
Why you put our face on coach's head?
Town center facade replacement at forty-seven thousand.
Thank you for amounts, that's what we.
Forty-seven thousand, I thought you said.
Can you, can you give that amount?
It's forty-seven thousand.
Well, you know what, maybe this guy, he might be able to answer some questions.
Oh, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Also, I would like to note, the village manager is not here. I gave the tax in. Check.
Hey, these village managers are the ones that go around, we ain't got no money, we ain't got no money.
One zero nine, one zero eight.
Talking about Harry Chubb.
All right, Ms. Kelly, did that money come from the, um, Clorox Fund? That, that money came from Clorox? Or, or the fund?
Yes.
Okay, I would need that documentation prior to paying the bill.
Hey, Travis, thank you. Pull them down.
All we need to do is write what you just.
What we doing was right, you gonna learn what we're, similar to.
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna write a jail.
Okay. And these others, they sit there and they say nothing.
But, 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 Trustee, Trustee, but, let, let, the, the Clorox Fund, you know what that is, right?
But, you know what?
Let me tell, let me explain it to you.
I understand what it is.
So, the Clorox Fund, for the record, is for some lawsuit that the village overpaid Clorox.
Village manager.
Well, let me finish talking, 'cause everybody doesn't know what you know, Miss Millie, and you don't know what you know.
Oh.
So, the Clorox, there was a lawsuit that was, that the village was in with Clorox. Clorox was overpaid a couple of million dollars. The lawsuit came back, and I think the village settled for a little under a million dollars for the lawsuit.
Right.
There were specific earmark things that, uh, money could be utilized for.
Right.
The town center is one of those things. Before Clorox releases any dollars, there has to be a letter and an explanation on what the use of the funds will be, to see if they approve it. Once it's approved, then they'll send the doggone check. That's what, that's what she's talking about, forty-seven thousand dollars for the town center. So it's basically a reimbursement. Once we submit the receipts back to Clorox, then they reimburse it. Is that the way we operate, Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
So, since Clorox, they, they did approve this, so.
She didn't even agree with you. Right. You just told her what it is, what it is. We don't, we don't, 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 oh.
I was, this is more, we're not going to, let us, let us operate this meeting as a business meeting, as a corporate body. And discuss edu- education. Let's not holler around from the seat. Control yourself, please, Millie. Don't holler around for the seats, okay? You better be, be, all right. Let, let, let her, let her talk. I didn't tell her, I'm telling people who don't know.
I don't want you to hear what Ms. Kelly said.
All right, well, if you said it, we can't hear, we, we talk, we can sing together, but then we definitely can't talk together. Mrs. Kelly is quite capable of speaking for herself.
Will you give her permission?
Trustee, what's the, what's the question on the floor you guys asked?
Oh, you know, I asked, well, before COVID hit, you, we were agreeing to get, uh, ballots for Clorox, and to remember. It was in April, and I never received the ballots. So, I would like to see the documentation that the money, you know, the request was asked for Clorox, for the forty-seven thousand dollars. And their response to agreeing to pay it. So I know that we have to submit a request.
So, so, so with the Clorox, the Clorox, uh, Estrel Fund, it is, um, a trustee is over, so it's not housed with the, in the village fund, it has its own fund. The village has to request any, uh, the village manager has to write a letter explaining what they want to spend this money for, if they request, uh, estimate, or what they may request invoices, or something for whatever, whatever wants, whatever you want to do, that's what, that's how you can just reimburse it.
You say a trustee is over it?
Yes.
A trustee of Clorox.
Trustee of Clorox.
Clorox. I understand, trustee.
Over this fund, so you just can't go into the fund and take the money out. You have to request it. The trustee looks over whatever the documentation is requested to get these funds. If that, if the, if it is approved, then it is in turn given to the village.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, if they have, if it doesn't meet those guidelines that were set in that agreement, they will not pay it.
Right.
So, you can ask, but you may not get, uh, you may not get it.
So with this, um, back-to-school thing, the forty-seven thousand, has that been paid already?
No, Mrs. Morgan, the forty-seven thousand is regarding the facade for the town center, which the trustee Jenkins was referring to.
Okay, let me ask you this. You shook your head about the Moles account. There is two accounts, the Moles account, and also the special event. The Moles account has twenty-two thousand. The, uh, special event has over two million. Am I not correct?
Are you asking me if, if, if it's a Moles bank account?
Yes.
It's not a Moles bank account.
Okay, the documentation that I have, that, that was given, that was given from Villa Charles. And it says Moles, twenty-two thousand. Then I have from Midland Bank, the special event, which is over two million dollars, which we view as a such fine. For me. Am I not correct? Are you familiar with that? Do I need to bring my phone up there so you can see?
May, may I, may I be?
It's a little bit confusing, please explain. So. So I can shut up about it, because I got two pieces of paper.
Well, I need to see the papers that you have, Miss Millie, but, but I will say is, I think that the cash receipts of, the, the cash receipts that come, well. One of the papers that you may have is a cash receipt documentation, 'cause I remember you asking for that, and the bank statement. So when we get a donation for something, it's booked under a certain line item, so that may be what you have.
And on top, it says Moles account.
All right, any other questions regarding the mayor's staff?
Let me ask a question, this is just a general question. Um, with all of this going on with Moles and special events, when are our audits gonna be completed? Uh, we need to, was it witness address all of these issues?
She's not much, oh, yeah, well, they're all, they're, they're up to twenty, it's just about done, right?
Well, they said that they were, they were, when would they be done, this I'm stating that was. You want your opinion?
Sixty and we're always seventy, I'm sure.
So we need the audits prior to the election, because we need to see what is going on with this administration.
Trustee, we need to say that, um, uh, we have been pushing the audit, auditors, the completion of the twenty-twenty audit, because several folk are asking for, I mean, funding sources, so we're trying to get it done as well. Uh, the COVID situation has caused some of their employees to lack getting the information, so we're behind in that and a few other things we're trying to get. Now, up to two thousand and nineteen is done, but twenty-twenty, 'cause we were going quite frequently, we were doing it, bum, 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 bum. But we, we somehow halted, so we're waiting on twenty-twenty as well. We need it for the purposes of funding for the state's commission, we need it for economic development, we need it, and we don't have it, so we're waiting on that as well.
Okay, well done, Madam Clerk. Oh, wait a minute, Trustee, make, make your motion in the second with all your items that you wanna have, uh, tabled.
I, I did.
You got a motion in the second, so well done, since you're not gonna accept it, because you want the table.
So she just, I mean, she's just pulling the checks.
Yes, right, motion is that the folder one that she itemized.
I had something about seeing the documents she had.
For Clorox.
Right, well, I got that written down, that she wanted to see the documents and the request for the facade. Right, right, okay, I got that down.
And also, I would like to see all the donors pertaining to the Moles, or not the Moles, this, whatever.
To the village.
To the village account, Moles and special events account. I would like to see all kinds of checks for all the, though, all of these checks that we're to issue out, um, from the donors. It's a list of donors, I'll email you the list of donors that were listed on the, um, the flyer. So I would like to see all of the donors as well.
I could give you that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, let me, let me be correct, I know I was there at the back-to-school, we already paid Samantha, Samantha Chapman from Channel Seven. I think we already paid Samantha, right?
A lot of shit's been lost, haven't they?
No, I, I, I mean, with Samantha, I think her thing was dealing with appearance and a book deal, where they paid for some books for the kids. Is that correct? I wanna make sure, 'cause I think that check is already out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that, so, I, I was, you know, I don't, or what, it's still being approved, right?
Whether it was under the manager's, uh, she had, she had the two thousand dollars.
It was a special event, is that why?
It was two thousand dollars, and she gets her.
Right, yeah, right, I remember it was two thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but she is.
Well done, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and this is the, they got to pull the check, I mentioned by trustee Jenkins.
I'm sure my friend is still, sorry to.
Trustee Lewis?
Vote aye.
Trustee Franklin?
Vote aye.
Trustee McFadden?
Vote aye.
Trustee Jenkins?
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Vote aye.
There we go.
Vote aye. Now we had a motion in the second, written for the bills payable. No, the remainder of the bills payable.
Remainder?
Yes. Yes, there are motion. So moved by Trustee Lewis. Seconded by Trustee Lewis, taking the bill. Well done, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis?
Vote aye.
Trustee Franklin?
Vote aye.
Trustee McFadden?
Vote aye.
Trustee Jenkins?
Vote no.
Trustee Brooks?
Vote no.
Vote aye to pay the bills. All right. Anything, guys? Comments? Trustee Brooks?
Okay, I just wanna say, um, good evening to all of those in attendance. Um, thank those who, um, have come out, uh, tonight. I can't believe it's eight-thirty already, but, uh, we're gonna shoot right through this, so I won't hold you, but I wanna say thank you to the residents, um, the seventeenth of September, that Saturday, they held, Russell, um, Association over there had a, um, cookout. Uh, a little bit, a little bit of everybody came and went. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to them over there, as, uh, they were right there on Santa Drive. They're right there on Santa Drive, actually, it's becoming, the village manager is not here. Um, but email was forward, dealing with a light post that is indeed down over there that, um, they would like fixed, but one thing that they would like to see is their streets, that was one complaint, that they had, as well as the association, it seems to be some confusion. One thing that seems to be a huge issue also is uh, the sewer. Uh, seems like everyone is backing up over there, and the association says, you know, they're not responsible for something. They call the village, then you call Aqua. So, we're gonna try to figure something out, uh, on who's responsible of what Matt has been doing as John, especially with the trees over there.
Yes.
Um, he, uh, went over there to assess, uh, trees that are actually in a position where the association should be cutting. If you pay association fee over there, you should be responsible, or the, the association should be responsible, uh, for those buildings, and I'm saying, when I say you, the association, you know you're responsible. Stop pushing everything back on the village. It's bad enough, the workload we have is heavy. Um, Matt has five guys that he is out there trying to schedule, to, and, and just imagine when winter time comes. He had, once again, I'm explaining it a thousand times, because the season is coming. He has five-ton trucks he has to worry about. University Park Way, and I fifty-seven, and Industrial Park. And those associations, those people are paying, I think one resident told me she paid almost like five hundred dollars. And that's quite a bit of money if you are a, a senior still living there, and you're paying those association fees. So I listened to all their concerns, and, uh, their, their concerns is definitely something that I think at some point that code enforcement may have to step in, uh, and address. And I think in some case, the village manager, like she stepped in and, uh, addressed some issues. Uh, also, if you got your bill for Aqua Water. Uh, also, if you got your bill for Aqua Water today, I got mine today. Who seen that last page? Don't, Aqua Aid, did you see it?
Yeah, new program.
Aqua Aid. In, in, in case somebody needs help, you can donate, did you see that? Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Look, the grandbaby came over, we filled the little pool of water up. I average, uh, what, one, maybe about one forty on the water bill. Two forty-six today. Two forty-six. And, you know, I called Little Sugar Mommy, y'all know. Little Sugar Mommy came over and she, she played in the pool for a day. And that's a one hundred and, and, and six dollar hike. That's ridiculous. Let me also clarify something too. I'm glad Ms. Taylor's here because a couple times I've seen something on TV. There was no oversight committee prior to twenty seventeen. There was no oversight committee. There was a committee where Aqua wanted to get the residents and they claimed they wanted to engage with us with a conversation. The thing that was sickening was that when I got to the seat, what I didn't realize is that the, the, the discord that was up here, Aqua seen the opportunity to go up on the water hike, I mean, on the water rates. We were able to take the law firm we had and file an appeal. Of the three hikes that you were about to get, University Park was only able to win one because it was too far down the line. And they, and, and once again, Aqua got over on us.
Yeah, they did.
So when we're not together, they find that opportunity to sneak in. And right now, they have the nerve to have Aqua Aid. I want to make sure I'm saying it right because I, I ran out of the house and got the, Aqua Aid. If you, if, it's to help others with the water. Yeah.
For us to donate to a pool so they can help someone else when they have the ability to do it themselves.
Exactly. And bottom line, at the end of the day, if Aqua was up here, I would tell them, Lord of the damned waves, why does it have to raise so high? Why are you charging? And once again, that was one of my pebbies, I talked to Trustee Lewis during the regalia farm, we walked outside. Once again, we found him for discovery.
For discovery, right now, the I E P A gave them the go-ahead because they had two consecutive six months saying that the water was okay. They said it was okay, so we talked about the rate hikes and they said it's all the ICC and that we in University Park are not complaining. So Ms. Scott, the mayor and myself, uh, were talking with them about an amnesty program for our, uh, village, for our residents. So we're working together, trying to get that because we complained about the, the rates are ridiculous and people who are on a fixed income, it, it's, it's too much for them to pay. So we are working, Ms. Scott, myself and the mayor are in talks with Aqua, trying to see what we can figure out for the residents. And, and, and of course, Anita Fane is definitely in the background fighting. She is definitely, that, that's true.
Who is that? What, what is she doing?
So, so.
So, um, yeah, let me just finish up by saying with Aqua. The one thing that I want to stand by is that we all been here long enough, if you lived in University Park for a minimum of ten years, we had a flat sewer rate. And that was one of the arguments that I had before I came off that, that negotiation team. Is that if you want to satisfy the residents in University Park, go to the, go back, because I know we all remember when it was forty-five dollars flat and it was probably lower than that at one point.
When we was in the well.
When we was in the well. But here come the Kankakee, so University Park has to pay for what they have drilled all the way from Kankakee here. So, um, I'm not happy about it, I think it's somewhere in the near future, uh, we'll win on that. Um, also, I want to bring up Marilyn Brown. Mary, you knew about Marilyn Brown? Marilyn Brown passed away from cancer. The former police, and I think that was something that should have been through the community, uh, yeah, I know, everybody, it's shot. Uh, Marilyn Brown of the Police and Fire Commission, she was the pastor of the little church up here right by the store. Say it again, Mrs.? Miller Chap, yeah, Chaplin. They, she, she has passed away from cancer, no one knew. Uh, this was as far as back last year. And nobody notified the village. Yeah, she's been gone that long and so on November the thirteenth, they will be doing a dedication to the hall, uh, up there, uh, for her. That is a tentative date, I don't, um, you know the pastor, Mary, I talked to her. Uh, they're, they're, they were there. We were there Saturday, uh, when we had this discussion. It was a, a brick, I was stunned for a moment, I couldn't even talk. Uh, what was great about Marilyn was that Marilyn did a lot outside of University Park. Um, if you go, there's a YouTube channel dedicated to her, it's over five minutes of videos of her with kids, you name it. And she was an inspiration to a lot. And she also mentored the pastor that's down there now who told me about it. So, uh, November the thirteenth, uh, doing those services, they're gonna dedicate, uh, the hall to her. And Marilyn, I miss you. And she was the one that suggested I become the vice chair of the Police and Fire Commission, which helped me elevate through that commission. Um, lastly, uh, Oscar Brown Senior. Um, I'm quite sure everyone may give their condolences, but, um, I would like to say he, uh, uh, Oscar Brown's father was always polite to me. Um, had a good conversation. Uh, my heart goes out to Oscar Brown Junior, who was on his board. I think somewhere in politics, we lose light of people. Somehow we get so wrapped up into the anger and hate and local politics that we forget the person that sits across from us is human. And really, a lot of times, words hurt. And I just want to say that when we come to talking about words hurt, um, Oscar never was like that with me or anyone else. Um, uh, but the board before me, I've heard the former mayor get called black bees. But I never heard it come out of Oscar Brown's mouth. Okay, um, so Oscar, when, when we get a chance, I'm quite sure all of us will place a call, um, and also, I guess, does, does the village know about Ms. Scott?
No.
Okay, so I would like to give my condolences to Ms. Scott's father, that's why she's not here. Um, he passed away. So, um, University Park, I just want to close out by saying is that, uh, it's a, I don't know what it is, this moon cycle, call it what you want. But this month has been a bad month, a lot of deaths, a lot of hurt. They every time, people even talking about nuclear war. So, University Park, what we need to do is that come together like we always did and pray and stick together. If somebody's wrong, they know they wrong. Go ahead and call out and move on. There's no need to go on anymore back and forth because that's when more dissension continues to happen. And that I want to say until we meet again in two weeks, may, uh, you and your family, uh, enjoy, uh, these past two weeks until we all sit in the same room again, God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Jenkins, thank you.
I want to pay my condolences to the Brown family and, and just pray for them. Oscar has always been, uh, just a good person, just Oscar Brown Junior. His father is just, was so nice and sweet and we just want to extend our prayers and condolences to the family and if he needs anything and he sees this, just reach out and I'm there. Also, I wanted to inform you guys that Moni Township is having a senior event for the seniors, you have to call and reserve your spot. The number is one seven oh eight five three four six zero two zero. And it is sponsored by Senator Joyce and they're gonna have vendors and they're gonna be discussing identity theft for the seniors. Also, I would like to let everybody know my little piece of good news. My son is coming home from, um, the marines this week. Twenty-five wonderful days. But that's when the hard part starts, when he leaves, I want to see my baby for a year. So he's shipping out. So I would, I would love you guys to continue to pray for him and keep him prayed all the, while he's gone to see the world. I'm happy, but I will miss him and I have great concern. And I thank you guys for praying for so many years for me. And with him gone, it has lifted me up and kept me in my right frame of mind because there's a lot of times I can't talk to him and I'll be worried out of my mind. But thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you're doing and everything you've done for my family and keeping us prayed up and strengthened. Also, I would like to say that what, um, Trustee Brooks has touched on, we have to come together as a community because we are living in trying times and we know that an election season is coming up and things happen and people say things. So let's be mindful for what we do to each other because this, this will impact the rest of our lives. It will, it, it can, we have children, we don't want these things to bounce off our children and them have to deal with what they have to do. And I thank, uh, Trustee Franklin for what he does with, has been doing with the crisis of the children. Um, when my daughter was in middle school, three children committed suicide within a year. And so it does happen and it is not color biased. It does happen in a lot of different families. We have drugs out here on the streets, guns, all of these different things. So we just have to be mindful of what our children are going through and they learn from us. So we have to set the right example, so they will follow the right example. And that's it, and thank you. You guys, in two weeks, I'll see you again.
Thank you, Trustee. Did I hear you anything, huh? No comment. Trustee Franklin?
Give me about three minutes, man. I want to offer my condolences as well to the village manager's family as well as Oscar Brown, and lots of my fathers, a tough, a tough peer to swallow. So I just, I have you all in my prayers. I want to publicly thank, uh, the black men in the community has stepped up to the challenge to partner with me uh, for a community mentoring program that we've really had some, um, huge success with helping the school district get off to a good start. Um, as you know, the middle school ended last year on a, a negative note where there was a weapon found in the building. Um, so I felt that it would be extremely important for them to start the first day of, of school this year with some positive images. And I want to thank, uh, the fifteen black men that showed up on the first day of school with me with suits and ties on to, to simply just provide a positive image on, on day one for the middle school children. Um, something that they don't see, uh, very often, or as often as they should. And, uh, it was just a really good experience. Uh, we were also able to, uh, respond to a crisis situation at the high school where there was some threats of a school shooting. And, and, and for this situation, I was able to actually organize fifty black men to show up to the school to make sure that, um, the crisis situation did not take place. And also just, as well as provide a, a positive image for our, for our young men and young women who are in the school district. So I just want to publicly thank the guys that, that stepped up to the plate. I've been putting black men in the community on the spot since I've been up here and, um, finally beginning to get some traction. So my goal is to have, uh, a hundred black men that are part of this mentor and program that makes a five-year commitment, that we're able to respond to situations within the community and the school district to make sure that our children are safe. We've also been able to establish, um, a safe passage for the children that walk home from the middle school. Uh, last week, we gave, uh, we, we, we did a bike patrol with us, me and some of the other coaches for the University Park line, so just providing a presence. And with the young men and young women, seeing that they have support from people in the community, it's been a, it's been a powerful thing. So I just want to thank everyone who's, who's been in assistance with that program. Uh, also, this Sunday, we're having our breast cancer awareness, uh, pink hour football game at our home field. Uh, we're gonna be honoring all, uh, breast cancer survivors, uh, within the community. This is something that we traditionally do. Um, it'll be, it'll be at, it'll be at Palmer Park. Uh, the games start at ten and they usually run all the way to five o'clock. At halftime of specific games, we'll be honoring and, uh, doing some presentations to some, some of the breast cancer survivors and acknowledging some of the, um, cancer victims, so to speak, as well. So, uh, that'll be this Sunday. And, uh, that concludes my comments, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, guys. Ms. E.
There are three topics that I have to deal with. First of all, I'm giving my condolences to Brother Scott, I mean Brother Brown and Sister Scott, uh, and to their families, to the law, parents, uh, that can be detrimental. And, um, so I am in fact, uh, one that know that. So I am sending out my condolences to the individuals and their families. Three other short things, I just want to mention that, uh, we received the, um, the ComEd Ring Regent Grant and we anticipated the receipt of a ten thousand dollars grant approval, but the village never received the grant from ComEd. We never received a check, ComEd still had it out. So what we did is we had ComEd, the council, the check, we issuing a check. And, um, they sent it to six ninety-eight, we don't know what happened, but they were given the correct information. So there's a check of ten thousand dollars for coming. We're gonna take the resolution that the board approved tonight and submit it to them, so for the veterans memorial, so we're looking forward to that check. Uh, Mayor Board, um, today I submitted another grant proposal to Will County Archafond. They allow you X number of dollars based on your population. And Mayor Board, you all have been talking about pandling and the fishing dock. So this is what I included as part of this and that was submitted accordingly. And it's utilizing the dollars, we will appear within the next two, three weeks, the award, so that's another grant that we.
So, Ms. E, that's about forty, each pair is estimated about forty?
Forty-one thousand three hundred.
And those are the metal pairs that are eighty-eight compliant, a lot different than the other ones over there?
Absolutely, absolutely, so that went out today. The other thing is of the eighty-plus, near ninety, um, businesses that are in the industrial area, um, number one, I've got the listing, start setting up the appointment with the individuals. First two, I attempted to start, somehow it got around to the others and they were wondering why they were not included. So we're starting from the start line. We, the village has developed a very comprehensive village, University Park, community welcome package. Uh, it will be published. This is in the form of a brochure, uh, with, uh, one, uh, inclusion of, uh, a flyer from C-Face that will give them, the businesses, an opportunity to get free energy savings kind of equipment. Also in here are the possibilities for persons that want to, um, advertise their business financially, they have a right to put it in here. So that will be some additional income from the village. But this brochure, um, has been revised and ready and we're about to get that published. Also, uh, the school district has passed on some of those meetings that are set up with the superintendent and go along and of course, some of them, the mayor will and all other people wants. I get them set up, uh, um, all can determine which ones they want to attend with me, but it is my, um, specific goal is to meet with every one of the persons in the industrial area that in fact pays a fee in addition to some other commercial businesses, we don't want to leave them out. And, um, Mayor, I don't know if it's now, now's the time to talk about that, but it's something that's been planned with me. And Mayor, I don't know if it's now, now's the time to talk about that, but it's something that's being planned with the, the business gala, after-work gala that's being planned in partnership with Governor State University.
Dr. Green.
With Dr. Green whereby all the businesses now would have an opportunity to get together. They don't know each other. Some of them don't, other than what they see or they visit. This is an opportunity for them to actually get together and begin to partner on some things. And the village and certain organizations can become recipients of some of those dollars that they have in special fund accounts. Village needs to introduce the need of this community and the various youth senior programs and they can begin to generate dollars to these organizations in town. Mayor, that's going to end my report.
Thank you very much. Miss E, thank you very much. As we close, we want to go to a brief executive session. I just want to piggyback on some of the conversations with Aqua. Yes, the IDPA and the US EPA have definitely declared that the water hasn't met the standards. So, some of the questions and some of the misnomers that we hear out there, then if the water hasn't reached the standards, why is Aqua still distributing water? Well, Aqua has no choice in this matter because that's a court order by the Attorney General's Office. They can distribute water maybe for the next two years and the water can still be at the acceptable standards. Aqua has no control on when they stop distributing water to our residents. One of the things that we do question of them is can they still make it a little easier for our senior citizens with smaller bottles? With the new president coming in, maybe things will change. But there are good conversations and Attorney Fane is the only one that is in the room right now. This is what they would consider as one of the most complicated law cases in the state of Illinois because this has not actually happened before. We hear of other areas where they control the water. But let's look at some of the real problems. The real problems actually occur in Springfield because right now, currently for the last twenty to thirty years, there is no cap on public utilities such as water and electricity and those other things that we naturally have to use. So, when Aqua petitions the ICC, if we don't have a thousand people out there protesting and going back at them, the ICC is going to grant the powerhouse, as we know it's Aqua, six hundred seventy-one million dollar traded nationally on the stock market. They're going to grant them their risk. The problem is, we need to speak to our legislators, get our voice heard in Springfield and get a cap on public utilities. Because right now, they can charge, 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 charge out the roof. And what it really appears to me is that right now, University Park is in a good, good position. Things are getting fixed up, things are turning the curve. And what happens is like, small story, I grew up in Ida B. Wells, six forty-two East Thirty-Ninth Street, Chicago. At that time, it was considered as the projects, the two flat building that we own was about forty-five thousand dollars. But then all of a sudden, crime started going up, different things started happening. Minorities started scattering out, leaving and everything, leaving the valuable land, which is that lakefront. Now, twenty years later, Little Longland, now reversing, the same apartments, the same area, which is what's Ida B. Wells then is now Ronsville, which that same building that we own for fifty thousand is worth eight hundred thousand dollars now. And that's what's happening in University Park. You have to actually kind of pay attention. They desire this, this community, they desire this land with the ingress egress of I-57, which is the fastest economic development corridor in the state of Illinois. And all the things that we have, a four-year university, a train station, which is the beginning or the end of the line, how you want to call it. The largest companies in the world, not just in the state, in the world reside here in our community in University Park. From a Clorox to an Amazon to Carvana, a Century Steel, Dot Foods and on and on and on. Avatar, which is a food plant, which has the ingredients for Sunny Delight and Hawaii Punch. These things are right here in University Park. Let's not go at each other on misinformation because my predecessors used to always tell me that I would never be there because these folks believe a lie before they believe the truth. When it's time to let the lies stop, let the truth be held and move this community forward. There's nothing, nobody on this board member would argue against, go against, when they own a property. I'll use myself as an example because I get tired of that nonsense and people saying I'm doing all this nonsense. I'm not going to continue to receive things that are derogatory and put a blemish on this community. So, I have a home, we have multiple homes here. I have my kids, my grandkids, and practically I might have my great-grandkids. And everyone has a piece of this town that they love. So, anything that's going to be good for this town, think, who's going to cut off their own head to spite somebody when he's going to have your vote for your town? When I talk about a park district, everyone, everyone talks about what we don't have. When you poll around and you look at, I'll use our library as an example. According to statistics, less than fifteen percent of our residents utilize our library currently as we are right now. When you look at the Creek Park District, you have thirty-seven percent of our residents participating in the Creek Park District. When we, when we talk about our individual groups that are bold enough to step up to try to fill the void, like the baseball association, the track people, the football people. But, you know, and we're not going to be using these kids as political pawns and saying that we're not, we're not supporting this and we're not supporting that. What the people are crying out is for some kind of form that encompasses services for everybody. We talk about taxpayers' dollars, I pay a hefty amount of taxes. But right now, none of us are getting anything for our tax dollars because we're void of a park recreation system, which we're all paying for. Things have changed now. So, when we did the numbers and we're going to promote this park district and those who can oppose it will oppose it because everybody has their choice. But when you look at the numbers, what the park district will cost the average taxpayer is an additional two hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. And added to our living. So, so let me finish because I didn't interrupt anybody. So, give me the courtesy and respect as the chair to speak out.
Well, tell the truth.
So, the park, the park district will cost us, according to our financial account's third-party verification, who can do the numbers, it will cost us two hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents.
That's not true.
For, for, for creation of a park district.
We don't even have capital to start it.
So, the creation of a park.
We go to a health club.
You know what, it's really, really hard to actually try to talk to people who really want to know what's going on for a fact when you continuously holler off on the audience. Do the research. Anything that Mayor Joseph Boudreaux says the third tells you is in black and white and I can verify these things. So, so the park district thing is two sixteen seventy-four for the creation of it. So, the difference in the park district and the park recreation is the same dollars that you would fund a park recreation department are the same dollars that you would fund a park district for. The advantage of a park district is that's an opportunity to subsidize some of the expenses and operating costs because it's an opportunity for grants and everything else. So, as we go on, because see, when a community isn't educated and don't have the facts, it's hard to stay and just stay angry talking about our tax dollars, tax dollars. But let's make, let's make real decisions, let's look at the facts, you know, anti, anti. We can't continue to talk about what we used to do because what we used to do, we didn't have any growth. We didn't have no audience, we didn't have any of this stuff done.
Why are you interested in a park district when you're not going to be mayor?
Because it's good for my community. And let me tell you something, you're not the forecaster of my future. And when God places somebody in a place, don't you think that man controls what God does? He placed me here to be victorious and move this community forward. And whatever God's will is for me, then I'm good with it. But don't you put yourself in that situation because you're not able. So, back into, back into the other stuff, since you want to be rude again because you just can't hold yourself, that's just, we'll put stuff on the website, we'll send information, they'll mail us out and make an educated vote when it goes to the polls. You know, we talk about all these different groups that the village isn't funding this, the village isn't, you're crying out for the services, but you just don't want to pay for them. Is the time you finally paid for something and you get it what you paid for? That's all we want to do.
We're putting a lot of money in the golf course, the known golf site, seventy-eight thousand a month.
That is a nonsense outrageous, outright, no truth to it. Jana, Jana, relax, it is not seventy-eight thousand dollars. And to be honest with you, if you do your homework, and I'm not advocating, but I'm going to tell you the truth. Right now, this is the lowest management fee since we've had a management group in this golf course that we ever had. Don't hear what I say, but do the homework yourself. Their cap at the golf course is five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars a year. All right.
I told you November, December, that golf course was paid one hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Mrs. Morgan, Mrs. Morgan, I'm not going to debate you. You had your fucking say.
What are you talking about?
Okay, if you do your homework and if you look at the history of the golf course.
How much is they bringing in?
This is the lowest, it's never brought in any money.
That's the homework.
It's never brought in any money. And it's a horrible mistake to purchase a golf course because we don't run government by golf course grocery stores and town centers. That's not what government does. That's the biggest mistake.
Then sell the doggone thing, it's a waste of money.
Okay, but you know what, it's rude of you guys not to hear, be patient enough, at least hear. And you can take your opinion, but check the books, look at the black and whites, this is lost.
We're out of here in lies.
But stop making them.
That's what I'm telling you.
Stop making them. And I'm going to make the motion for adjournment because we're going into a second session. Mr. Matt, you have something you want to say?
Mr. Stacey, state one, the North Rock.
All right.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, trustees, residents. For the month of August and September, while I've been here, Public Works has cut and cleaned up twenty vacant properties. We've been cutting and cleaning the parkways throughout the village. Also, we've repaired and replaced fifteen street signs, headed signs where they needed to be added on the roadways where they were missing. We've cut down forty dead trees so far right now in the village. We still have more to do. We're getting them, you know, gradually because we're doing trees and we go and jump into doing the streetlights as we only have one boom truck right now. Also, we've repaired twenty-nine streetlights. There have been some streetlights that the resident has called in and said they've been out for six months. Some have been out almost a year. Those of you that live on Black Hawk and Amherst, the underground wiring has been replaced. We have to wait for ComEd to come out to reconnect to their box where we get the service from. And there was one on,
Sullivan?
Yeah, Sullivan. We did an old temporary overhead as we're repairing underground wires that are broken over there as well. We've been out doing potholes throughout the town, keep circling back on those. Also, the mechanic's been in the garage getting vehicles ready for the winter time. He's been doing service to the trucks that are in there, also been servicing the police cars. He did ten of those last month, serviced police cars. Also, the Metro Lot East Parking Lot. We've had, when I first came in, we had calls about lights being out over there. So, we went out there, we had five of the poles that had bad wiring that the rodents had gotten into and chewed the wires on it. So, five of the light poles, we ran new wire. Those are up and working. We had two poles that, or I'm sorry, five poles that had bad fuses in it, we replaced the fuses. Seventeen of the light fixtures, because at the Metro Lot, there's three lights to a pole. So, seventeen of those lights were, the fixtures were out on, or not the fixtures, the photocells were out. We replaced seventeen of the photocells, those are all up and working. The lights on the West Lot, we checked, those are all up and working. The guys have been going here twice a week, picking up garbage, cutting, trimming, trying to keep it all clean. The other things were, there were some light poles that were knocked down. Ms. Millie, you called and spoke to me about them. We got some covers over the wires that were there until we could get the light poles replaced. Samsung Drive was another one where we replaced the underground wiring that was out for a year. We did put some speed bumps down on Circle Drive and also Hickock off of Burnham Avenue where it turns into Hamilton. We have salt that we ordered, it's been delivered in, so we have salt and we are ready for the winter time. Again, Trustee, we drained the pool, the Hickock pool. I'll go and keep an eye on it in case it fills up again. The windows at Regal Farm, the broken ones have been boarded up. So, again, if anybody's got anything or whatnot, please come by.
What about the one that's not boarded up?
I'm sorry?
What about the one that's not boarded up facing Surrey Lane? It's been like that for the last two years.
Okay, I'll go and check on that.
I even talked to someone about boarding that up, up there.
On the Regal Farm?
Yeah, on the Regal Farm, Bond.
I'll go and check that one.
I think I talked to you about it. I talked to Miss E about it.
Yes.
It's been like that for the last two years.
Okay, we'll go check that out. I'll check it out.
How about the transformer that blew out from the police department?
Oh, that's been repaired, everything's back up and running.
Was a company called in or how was that repaired?
Yeah, they're, I went out and looked for a couple of companies. We had a company come in to make some repairs at the police department. We didn't have nobody here that dealt with electric like that. That's a lot of high voltage over there. So, we had a company called Meek come out. They came out, pulled the burned-up box out of there. Spoke with the village manager, getting the price on the surge protector itself. When that comes in, I'll meet with her and then we'll bring that to the board. I'll let them know what the charge is going to be for that.
So, you still need to bring in the surge protector?
Yeah, that had to be ordered. That's not, it's not nothing you can go to Menards and get. This is something heavy duty that runs the whole police station.
Need M-E-A-D-E?
Yes, correct. Yeah, they're, they got one of the buildings out in the industrial park where they do their training as well. But yeah, they came in, helped us out with all that, disconnected the old one, getting the police station up and running. And yeah, that's all good right now.
So, is that liable to happen again in the very, very near future before the surge protector is in?
I don't see it happening, but I don't know. That's all underground wiring, it's kind of like an act of God. If it happens, it does, if it doesn't, so. But other than that, Mayor, trustees, if you have any questions?
Just about, you know, RFQ was out for those streets. Have you had communication about those drains and everything?
I spoke with Elizabeth, we're supposed to be meeting about that to check all the curb drains and all that, yeah.
All right, good.
Could we, could we take that tip from these, that she's supposed to get in here?
Thank you, Matt. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I say one more thing?
Pending litigation.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, okay. All right, there's a motion and a second, second by Trustee Brooks. Roll, roll call and clerk.
Vote time, Trustee Johnson.
Vote time.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote time.
Mayor, do that.
Vote time. This executive session should be a very short one for the purpose of litigation. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight. Your comments are greatly appreciated and needed. Thank you so much.